My initial forecast was 7:30, actually. But I don't know. But it's kind of hard to tell. I don't think the public remembers that.
It must have been, because we had a lot of schedule. It's only provided, scheduled to the city mayor's office.
Okay.
And they both wrote, "For ourselves."
Okay, let's hope we're on fish and we'll certainly let it out at the beginning. So it's a concentration.
Concentration.
I'm sorry? Seven o'clock. They're not going to get it. But we'll try. Meeting to order, please. Please join me in the salute to the flag. Our federal allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We two republics, for which stands our nation, and make our invisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mia Chow.
Here.
Ms. Del Rossi.
Here.
Mr. Di-- where is she?
She's Zooming.
Is she on Zoom?
Oh, she's Zooming. Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Ms. Doherty?
Yeah.
Mr. Lay?
Yeah.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Thompson. Six present, one absent.
Thank you. We have called this special meeting to discuss an unfinished business of the consideration of temporary adjustments to the student attendance policy. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. I'll leave my remarks brief, the same intro remarks I shared with you at the last meeting. Mr. Skinner has put significant amounts of time into this. This is for a temporary adjustment to the policy for just this school year. With that, I'll defer to Mr. Skinner. He'll walk you through that work, as well as the adjustments that are recommended, and we'll stand for any questions. Mr. Skinner?
Thank you. I think we are aware that the COVID pandemic has had a significant impact on students' attendance. And while quarantine and COVID sickness absences are excused, the rate of student absences, including unexcused absences, has been greatly impacted by the pandemic. And it became really apparent later in the fall, and then January with the Omicron variant, you know, our attendance rates were the worst we've ever seen, by far. Chronic absenteeism and just general absenteeism. And so it's led to sort of this heightened concern about checking out where we're, how we're going to get students caught up, how we're going to make up for that learning. We, as I think I've said recently in one of our meetings, we can't make up the absences that a child missed, even if they come in on Saturday. We can't, we still have to count them as being absent from school. And part of the exploration of buying back the learning time with students and so forth was checking out the policy. So if I could digress for a moment, please, in terms of my experience and context, I want to explain part of this. After the most recent version of the attendance slash promotion and retention policy was written, I was a school principal during that time, at some point in the 2000s. There was lots and lots and lots of research on the negative impacts of retention on students. One piece of that, I provided a couple of articles for you that refers to the research I'm talking about. Successive superintendents and central office figures had us look at information like that and encouraged principals to use your discretion before retaining a child. Would it really benefit that student? One superintendent would not allow us to retain a student unless we came forward with a plan that basically said, "What are you going to do differently next time?" So we know retention is harmful for students, generally. I can speak more, in more detail if you'd like. We know retention is harmful for students, and most often, when students are retained, they go back to that same grade level and just repeat the subject, the same curriculum in the same way. And it's an utter failure. And if you retain a child because of absences, it may benefit if the child, in the exceptional case where a child was in hospital with a serious illness and missed a lot of school, if it's because of truancy, the truancy gets worse. If it's because of reading, research shows students who are retained because of reading, being behind grade level in reading, ironically, the reading is the worst aspect of the child's progress from there on out. So they don't do as well in math, they don't do as well in their other subjects, but reading in particular suffers, even though that's the primary reason for retaining a child, with the possible exception of grades kindergarten, first grade. Sometimes it's beneficial, you can make a case. At any rate, I digressed again. Principals were urged so much over the years to use your discretion, have a plan, don't retain a child who we know it's not going to be beneficial to, retention is linked to high school dropouts, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. To the point that I thought erroneously that principal discretion was written into the policy. In many places in our student handbook, the policy or the policy is listed, and then somewhere in the small print, it says, you know, the principals may have discretion. In our dress code, for example, certain dress items are not, are prohibited, but it also gives the principal discretion. It's only recently when we pulled the policy, and I went looking for where it called for principal discretion, it's not in the policy. It uses very stark language such as, "If students miss, are absent for 25 unexcused absences, they will be retained." When I informed Dr. Boyd, he was adamant that we follow policy and that we work consistently with policy and that we bring this to you. Frankly, if we hadn't done that, we'd be following, as we have done for many years, not retaining students who had 25 unexcused absences. I did do a search, and as far as I can tell, approximately 10% of students who have more than 25 absences, unexcused absences in a school year are retained. Last year, 261 students in Lowell had more than 25 unexcused absences. 28 were retained, a little bit more than 10%. And I don't have the data for all the years back, but it's something of that nature. In other words, our practice has not been consistent with the current policy, and now we're in a predicament where we have so many absences, if we were to follow the current policy, we'd be swamped. And more to the point, we'd not be serving students well. We're working very, very hard. Principals and teachers, administrators are working hard to provide many, many opportunities for students to make up for learning loss. I can talk more about that as well. We do, I feel strongly, need some relief from the policy as written, at least through the remainder of this school year. A pause. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Skinner. Have there been any studies that have debunked that theory that retaining a child is damaging to them? Is there, are there any studies that debunk that and say that it really doesn't, in many cases, it's really necessary? And I think we're doing it, in some cases, a disservice by allowing a child to go on, just passing them into the next grade, into the next grade, into the next grade. By the time they get out of elementary schools, or by the time they get out of middle school, they could possibly be three to four grade levels below where they should be. And so I think in that case, we've done that child a disservice. And I know, quite honestly, that we do have so many programs already in place that go out and try to help all of these kids who are struggling in their education process. So I just wonder if, an overabundance of caution, as it were, and I know that's like a taboo expression nowadays, but I think many, in many cases, I think retaining a student could be the best thing to happen to that child.
Mr. Dakota, I'm very glad you asked. Oftentimes, in the past, when as teachers in classrooms, and we tried different strategies, when as principals we planned, and when the school committees, we wrote policy, we did the very best that we thought, and we used our best thinking, but we didn't necessarily follow research. So I believe we wrote the current policy at the very time that the research was coming out. This is, I deliberately chose an article from 2005. If you read the article, I don't want to bring you through it, but one thing I'll point you to, if you look at the research that the article references, there are two in there, just the title of the research, "The scarring effects of primary grade retention." Various of them link, make the distinct link between early grade retention and dropout in high school. So to answer your question, your original question, is there any research that debunks that? No. You can find, of course you can find, an individual exceptional student who may have been retained and does just fine. One example, in my experience, was when a parent insisted on retaining their child, as it turns out, was because they hoped that they'd have a better chance of being a captain on an athletic team in high school. And that child and their parent were in it together, on the plan, and the child succeeded and didn't, you know, but in the vast, that exception proves the rule. In the vast majority of cases, it's damaging for the student's academics, for their self-esteem, for their mental health, for their peer relationships. It's all in the articles that are shared with you. And as well as that, in the article that I shared with you, there's a series of recommendations in place of retention that we'd do well to follow. We know what they are. And again, I can talk more if you'd like.
But could, it might also be helpful, some of that, I think there's a need and value into a deep discussion on the longstanding policy change that this committee might want to consider and we might want to recommend to you. But part of that need for deep discussion is why we're suggesting here, a temporary adjustment to align with what we understood to be past practice, so that we can be consistent. We want the guidance from the committee. If that are, the historic practices in this district are not actually consistent with the intent of the committee, then we want that guidance. Here, what we attempted to do was to reflect what we understood, the intent of the committee and the historic practice to be, without going far ranging and wide scale in the changes. We do think that there's a need for a deep dive, and what this allows you with the recommendation here, absent that deep dive, you revert right back to the prior policy at the conclusion of this academic year. So the recommendation here is just for the continuation of this academic year, and our attempt here with the language changes, we're to, an attempt to reflect what we understood to be the intent of the committee and what we understood to be the historic practice of principals, so that we can make sure that we're transparent with families, and also make sure we're transparent with the governing body as to our implementation of your policies.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So a few, I think there were a few things kind of in play at this point. I think, first and foremost, my initial question to begin all of this was, was basically to understand and to understand what the implementation and the accountability standards would be, in terms of the individual plans that are, that are listed in this as a response. So that's, to me, that's the most important thing. I want to understand what were, how principals are creating these individual plans, and then step two is, how can the public, how can the school committee be able to track how they're implemented? I am not a fan of retention, that's not the point of any of this. But I do think that you have underscored a very real concern, that there are policies that this committee had in place that were never updated, that prior administrations, other administrations, whenever they may have happened, have chosen to ignore. And that's a problem. And that's a problem on, for the administration, you're not getting clear guidance. It's a problem for us, because we're responsible. So if for the last, since 2005, I was here in 2005, I was a child, but I was here. But, so, you know, I think that it drives home for me, and you can, I apologize, but it drives home for me that we need a policy subcommittee that is going to do the deep dive on this. Prior to this, I know that, and I don't remember who it was, but MASC provides a service, if I'm not mistaken, to do a review of the policies, go through it with the, you know, school committee, whether it's, you know, with the subcommittee requiring the action of the full committee. But I think that this has brought into very clear relief that we need to go through and do a professional review of our policies. I know that there are about 1,001 pages of random policies that all get stitched together that, you know, so it makes absolute perfect sense for us to go through, review each policy, require this committee to take action on it, require the administration to offer insights and recommendations. So I mean, that's, so those are the kind of two things at play. I would like to, at this meeting tonight, be able to get my questions asked, because those are the ones I care about, about the individual plans and the implementation and accountability standards. So that's my focus tonight, and I think that we can, I think that the next stage is to decide how we want to move forward, to do what is clearly necessary in terms of a policy review. I mean, even just looking at these, I mean, they don't even look like each other. The middle school policy doesn't even look like the high school policy. So, I mean, I just think we need to go through that process, and that's a charge, I think, to this committee that we need to, we need to undertake. But I would, you know, again, I have, my question is how we develop the individual plans, how we make ourselves accountable for, you know, putting them in place, because ultimately, my concern, I'm not, attendance is very important, but it's what happens when, when you're in the classroom that's really important. We have students who, through no fault of their own, if they had COVID, or someone near them had COVID, or any other of a million other reasons, had to miss school, whether excused or unexcused, they missed that learning time. And it's the learning time that's the most important. And that's what I'm hoping we can kind of focus on and be able to feel confident that we're not just, like, I just don't want to put butts in seats. You know, it's not just about that, and it's not about, you know, our buyback programs used to be, you know, I know at the high school, you know, you came in for a week and you could buy back a week, you know. It's about content. It's about the heft and the rigor of what we're going to be providing these students to get them caught up, so that they're not in the position where they're getting passed along year after year and, you know, not getting the remediation that's necessary. That's my speech.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Is that something that, I know that the report was provided, is that something that you want, Mr. Superintendent, to answer your questions about how the principals and--
That's what, yeah, if we could get that information tonight from administration--
Right now, it's good for the public to hear as well, even though we read it, but maybe for the public watching tonight, we could hear a little bit from Mr. Superintendent, what are the plans from the principals to implement this policy that you are proposing?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Mr. Skinner can share briefly, but I think it also might be valuable that, at the conclusion of this year, when those plans are developed, we can also bring, bring back an update for the committee with some actual samples, redacted, of course, for public perception, but we can bring back some of those for the committee, so you can see them in action, redacting, again, identifiable information. But in general, Mr. Skinner, just based on your experience and the guidance you've been providing to principals, can you provide an overview?
Thank you. I'm glad Dr. Boyd mentioned about coming back with specifics and redacted ones, but in your packet tonight, I included this document. It's a three-page sort of a flowchart of our attendance intervention.
Through Mr. Superintendent to Mrs. Skinner, would you be able to verbalize this for the public watching it who don't have access to this package right now?
Thank you. Yes, I will. And I was, yeah, I was giving the members a moment to take a look at it, but as you see, it's a flowchart of sorts. It talks about annually what the expectation is for providing parents with information, what we're going to do prior to the start of the school year to inform parents, during the first week of school, to inform students and parents, following absences, what actions should be taken, daily, weekly, and so forth. There also are places where it refers to, on the second page, for example, "On or before the fifth unexcused absence." And if you look at the actions that are required at that point, it includes, in the lower part of the right-hand side, "Hold a formal TAT, or School-Based Team Meeting with a Parent or Guardian." And if you notice at the end of that paragraph, it says to share an action plan. In other words, it's through the processing of student absences, when school folks meet with parents and with social workers or assistant principals and so forth, that they make a plan for the child that's individualized. Sometimes it could involve a check-in with a trusted adult on a daily basis. Sometimes it involves a weekly lunch date with a social worker. You know, sometimes it involves a periodic home visit, but these are individualized plans for students. I will say that already our schools are swamped, and in a, in a normal year, have a difficult time following through on every single detail of this outline. I don't know that it's possible for them to maintain this pace with this level of detail for every individual child. But this is an answer to your question, Ms. Martin. This is the type of planning and the type of routine that's followed. A second point that I want to make, in the policy where it refers to these plans, it is not necessarily meaning that they're individual plans for the student. And so I think the last page of your packet is one of these failure intervention plans. This is one from the Daily School, 2019. I realized after I put it in there that the date was not on, 2019, and there are several points I'm making with this. One of them is that after writing in our policy that students with grades between 60 and 64 would be required to attend summer school, we promptly went into numerous school years where we didn't have the funding to run summer school. In this particular year, I chose this one to share with you, look how much funding we had at the Daily School to run summer school, $1,500. So that, why did we have summer school that year with two teachers meeting students at the building twice a week? That was-- And if you look at the actions that are required at that point, it includes in the lower part of the, of the right-hand side, hold a formal TAT or school-based team meeting with the parent or guardian. And if you notice at the end of that paragraph, it says to share an action plan. In other words, it's through the processing of student absences, when school folks meet with parents and with social workers or assistant principals and so forth, that they make a plan for the child that's individualized. Sometimes it could involve a check-in with a trusted adult on a daily basis. Sometimes it involves a weekly lunch date with a social worker. You know, sometimes it involves a periodic home visit. But these are individualized plans for students. I will say that already our schools are swamped and in a, in a, in a normal year, have a difficult time following through on every single detail of this outline. I don't know that it's possible for them to maintain this pace with this level of detail for every individual child. But this is an answer to your question, Ms. Martin. This is the type of planning and the type of routine that's followed. A second point that I want to make, in the policy where it refers to these plans, it, it is not necessarily meaning that they're individual plans for the student. And so I think the last page of your packet is one of these failure intervention plans. This is one from the daily school, 2019. I realized after I put it in there that the date was not on, 2019. And there are several points I'm making with this. One of them is that after writing in our policy that students with grades between 60 and 64 would be required to attend summer school, we promptly went into numerous school years where we didn't have the funding to run summer school. In this particular year, I chose this one to share with you. Look how much funding we had at the daily school to run summer school, $1,500. So that, why did we have summer school that year with two teachers meeting students at the building twice a week? That was pathetic. Because that's the funding that we had. That's, that's the amount of funding we had to work with. I can pull up this plan from other years, and it was much more robust if there was more funding. So this is, Ms. Martin, a failure intervention plan. It's not an individual plan, per se. The individual students are chosen to participate based on failing ELA and math. But the, the extent of the plan and how robust it is depends on the funding that's available. We are fortunate this year to have lots of funding available, and there's planning going on in each and every school for, right now, February vacation, April vacation, summer school, Saturday, and after school.
Hey, can I ask a question via Zoom?
Sure. If you could hold for a moment, and I apologize, you didn't look on Zoom, but Mr. DeCoto here had his hand up also, and then I will get to you after, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. DeCoto.
Thank you, thank you. Do, do all of the parents get this whole chronology? Is this something that is given to parents?
No, that's guidance for the schools.
Do you think it should be?
I do not.
No.
Now, the parents experience this. The parents are, are the folks we're planning for when we write these documents. It's the guidance for the schools on sort of ensuring that they process absences in an orderly way and that we're consistent across the district. One of the points that Ms. Doherty raised in, in the question that she had, if this helps to provide consistency.
Thank you.
Any other comment? Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes. I guess my concern is your example of what happened in 2019 with the summer school student who should have had summer school, but the funding wasn't there. And I think that just happens a lot in our schools. And my concern is what, I love the sound of this program because ours are these two different new approaches, I should say. But within that, there is going to take a great deal of staffing and a great deal of organizational movement of people to be able to do a tap within five days. And how is that going to be managed, I guess, and who is going to manage that? Because as of right now, I know we're already low on guidance counselors and social workers. So is there an actual plan in terms of staffing to oversee this so it can happen seamlessly? Thank you.
Mr. Rossi, thank you for being, understanding and sensitive to the needs in the school. And I think part of the same point that I was making, that this year, absences are such that, you know, we're inundated. And if I go back to the point that Dr. Boyd made, I think it's worth us having a deeper discussion on policy, perhaps for the following year, hopefully for normal times, right? And hopefully, research-informed policy. But that right now, we really are just looking for some ability to have some flexibility and to allow principals to have some discretion. If I may, Ms. Doherty had asked a question about other districts, and I did look into that. And in some other districts, Worcester, for example, it's, it's clear that they, literally in the policy, it's written that principals can override promotion requirements. They need to write to their supervisor with the reasons they're overriding their policy. But otherwise, their policy says that 14 absences or more may result in retention. So, at any rate, I could go on, I did look into the other districts you listed as well, and they all have some different ideas. Some of them do not link attendance with retention at all. There's no explicit link between retention and, and students' absences. In Fall River, they do suggest that if a child has four unexcused absences in a term, that after the fourth absence, their grade will be 65. This is what they, that's in their policy. It's all available online. At any rate, we're looking for, I don't know if it's, if I can point you to the Redline document that we provided you, and if we could consider if they are reasonable asks for a temporary adjustment.
Ms. Mon, Ms. Doherty?
So just before we go on to your Redline requests, just trying to think of how, again, this kind of gets implemented, you know, realizing that a principal and their administrative team are going to be, not going to say overwhelmed, but there, there's going to be a significant charge to them in orchestrating this for, say, I mean, even if, you know, if you look at 50 students in any one school, this is a big, it will be a big ask to develop these plans and whatnot. Is there an opportunity that we could kind of, from the central, from central administration, provide principals with basically a menu of all the different things? Like, it could include lunch with the, with the social worker, you know, recommendations to attend summer school, the April option, all these different things that you're kind of put, that you're putting out as options. So that then a principal could kind of, knowing the, the individual student, come up with these five out of 10 things that work for this individual student. It would then kind of normalize it so that you could make projections across that school community or across the district to see what, what's being used for each student. And ultimately, we could see what's most effective. And I don't want to, I don't want to tie principals' hands into only these 10 things that we can think of. But it seems like if we had kind of some standard, then in terms of implementation, to, to Ms. Del Rossi's point, yes, we are, you know, we're certainly still looking for the social workers and all that. But we did just make the, the accommodation of reducing the, the the prereqs for the social worker positions and put in place instead the, I don't, I don't know what the title was that we gave it. Adjustment counselor, there you go. You can see how I forgot that. But, though, I mean, it seems to me those are the staff who should be ensuring the implementation of this across the next four months. So is there a way to kind of come up with a, a menu that all schools can use to make their selections from, based on each individual student, and then through X2, to be able to track that over time?
I think it's a good idea. I think it's worthwhile. I think that in, in the majority of cases, schools are way ahead of us on this. They've been doing it. Also, up until now, schools have been allowed to develop what plans they can by individual school, and it varies by individual school. It varies mostly on what staffing they can provide. So staff are burned out, too. And sometimes you say, great, we've got all this money, we're going to provide wonderful programming in, in February vacation week. And how many people want to sign up to provide, you know, and there's not many people. So it varies by school, and it varies by who's available and so forth. But, but a menu of options is, certainly sounds like a very sensible idea. I'll be happy to provide one.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I come to this with a certain perspective of being the person who was in those policy subcommittee meetings back in 2004. And I know the whole impetus behind the attendance policy was to catch those kids and provide the, the intervention so we didn't lose them. And trying to spread from the earliest grades up to the high school, that attendance was important. But I do remember the lean years. That was actually when I ran, in 2003. We cut over 100 positions. We had no money for summer school. It was very limited. And then in 2004, we adjusted the policy so it said, if summer school is available.
That's right.
But I guess my, and I have to share my frustration here. I think we are at the 11th hour at looking at this issue when I've been trying for most of this pandemic to get the information from this administration. We had reports last year about 99% attendance in remote learning. And we knew that kids were popping in to get their attendance taken and then not showing up for half the day. And at the high school, blowing off classes and stuff like that. And in June, I had a motion asking how many kids at the high school were failing two or more courses. And I didn't get four votes for that. Some of those members are still here. But mostly, I didn't get the information ever coming from the administration. So I sent 10 questions to the team because it was presented to us February 16, last week. This is imperative that you make a decision right now. But there are huge gaps that we don't know yet. Like, right away, you told us tonight, it's only going to be for the rest of this year. We didn't even have that in the writing that was provided to us last week. But I still don't know exactly how many students are going to be impacted. And where the equity comes in for me is what happened to those kids last year. How many kids fell through the cracks and were retained or dropped out? We, I don't see that in this packet, although frankly, it's impossible to read this stuff while we're at the meeting. Again, that feeling of make these very important decisions, but we're not giving you all the details. We're probably all going to come to the same point. We've recognized, we can't keep back, what I just did, my math says, it's about, for each grade level, you're talking over 500 students in unexcused abs, and again, we're talking unexcused absences. These are not absences based because of COVID or medical quarantine. These are unexcused. So I've got about over 500 for each of the grades that I counted. Ninth grade, 946 students, 946 students. And we're talking about a solution that, I don't think anybody wants to see all those kids get retained. That's not a solution that we're comfortable with. But the bottom line is, we are about education. I don't want to pass kids through that don't have the learning. And we're looking at the high school. What is a little high school diploma going to mean if we're just passing them through? And as Ms. Martin said, we don't have a clear sense of how we're going to do the recovery. I know my colleague to the right was asking about this a year ago. What are we going to do to make up for the lost learning? And we still don't have a clear plan of what that is. We're hearing individual schools ran a February program, they're going to do. We know we've expanded summer school. That was incredible last year that we were able to do that. But I, I'm frustrated because we don't have all the information we should have to make the best decisions for our kids and our families. And we are here at the 11th hour, trying to make decisions with cobbled-together information. And I do agree with Ms. Martin, we clearly have to go back and look at the policies again. To me, you know, it's about the learning. And if, why would you retain someone if they're not going to get the learning? But how do we push through a whole cohort of children that haven't got the learning they were supposed to have? So I, I don't, I just have a bunch of questions. And I wonder if you could tell me, what is the total number of students that are going to be impacted? I don't see one total number. I, I did some math on this one, the unexcused absences. The front sheet, the number of students with 15 or more absences per school, those are unexcused? I mean, are we talking only unexcused absences?
Yes.
In this information?
Yes.
So Lowell High has 817 with, that have 15 or more unexcused absences.
That's correct.
So that number on the second sheet that breaks Lowell High down into greater than 10, greater than 15, that should somehow, nine through 12, should add up to eight, 17?
Yes.
Okay. We're just taking the greater than 15 one. What can you tell me?
Ms. Doherty, I appreciate your frustration, and I have your questions here. And my feeling about it is that if you ask a question, we're going to provide you with an answer. And I have answers to all the questions you've asked. They're not wonderfully perfect, polished answers. We have all the information that we could gather since last Friday afternoon, including calling all the other districts and so forth. But so I, I, I can respond to the questions if I haven't already done so, and what I've already said, and in the information that we have. So for example, if you ask how many students will be impacted, that varies from term to term, depending on student absences, right? But, but we have a fairly good idea. And so on this document, for example, that shares the number of 15 or more unexcused absences by schools, we chose 15 because a student in, in the, in the middle school policy, for example, where it says 25 unexcused absences or more, the child will be retained. So these students are on course to meet that particular metric, right? So this is a good approximation for the, the question that you've asked. If, if that approximation wasn't exact enough, you could do some more speculation on this document. And if you look at the ones, students who today already have more than 25 unexcused absences, we would have hundreds of retentions if we follow that policy, right? So that's the answer to your question, Ms. Doherty.
So what's the total number? I'm sorry.
I beg your pardon?
What is the total number? If we just go by these students?
The total number is over, is 3,400 students.
And that's the whole span?
That's, that's from pre-kindergarten through 12th grade.
And that's this unexcused absences, the second sheet?
Correct.
So that total is? 3,400 students will be impacted if we don't change the policy or if we do?
That's correct.
Those are the ones we're talking about.
That's correct. And, Ms., you have to understand that the number does vary, right? Even the chronic absentee numbers vary. A student that's chronically absent today is a student who's missed about 10 or 11 days of school. If they miss no more schools between now and May, that child won't be chronically absent anymore because, right? So, so I'm giving you the information we have as of today.
If I could, I also add, it's important to recognize, we're not suggesting, this is not a social promotion recommendation here. We are recommending that we align the policy with the past practice of the district. So here, our recommendation is solely to give us guidance because we are recommending here that we align the policy with the past practice of the district. If that's not the intent and the understanding of this committee as to how you want the district to operate, then give us that guidance. But there is not a recommendation here to change practice. Instead, the recommendation is to align the policy with practice, the understanding of administrators, as I understand it and hearing from one of our most experienced administrators, this is how they understood the intent of the committee. Mr. Skinner spent a significant amount of time searching for policies because he was adamant, he and I had many discussions, he was adamant, there is principal discretion in the policy. He knew it. He knew it as a fact. And then he ultimately came back to me and he said, I could not locate it, hence this discussion. That's the reason that the discussion came to you in February. We were having an internal discussion because the practices here in this district were aligned with what was perceived to be the intent of the committee. And for some reason, I, which I cannot describe for you because I was not here, the intent of the committee was not codified in policy. I don't know why that was. But here, all we are suggesting, we are recommending, align the policy with the practice because otherwise, we need the guidance from the committee that your intent is contrary to how it's been practiced historically in the district. So there is no social promotion recommendation. There will be students retained. However, it will work in the same fashion as it has historically within this district if you approve the recommendation. If you, if you choose and you provide us with guidance contrary to the historic practice, then ultimately, what we will impose by virtue of that guidance is a zero-tolerance policy that will have these youngsters retained. Whereas in no other year are we aware that that would have been the outcome of the policy. That's, that's the intent of the temporary adjustment, hence the reason that it's listed as temporary adjustment.
Can I ask this question?
Okay. Ms. Del Rossi, Ms. Doherty, Ms. Mon, you would defer to, to Mr. Rossi. Mr. Rossi?
I just, but this, this policy would begin this school year and affect those 3,400 kids district-wide? Is that?
That's correct.
Only this school year, Ms. Del Rossi. So Committee Member Del Rossi, this is only for this school year. Our recommendation is actually that we put this as a temporary adjustment and that we actually analyze this policy with the level of time and dedication that would be required to set a permanent policy. However, this would be a temporary adjustment, which again, is, the intent here was just to reflect the language that we understood to be the intent of the policy previously and, because it had not been reviewed. So only for this year.
I definitely think this district needs a policy in place. But to put a temporary policy in now, that's going to affect, going to affect 3,400 students of all different age ranges, just isn't, is not fair. I think we need a clear-cut policy going towards next year so parents know this is what's going on. And this has been two and a half years of COVID we're going on now, which has thrown a whole other element into everything. And even though these And even though these policies historically in the past were the policies, society has changed, life situations have changed a great deal. So I just think if you're going to work on changing a policy, let's not do it mid-school year where it's going to upset so many students. Let's maybe think about a permanent policy to put in place for the 22, 23 school year. But, thank you. That's it. That's all I had to say.
Okay. If I can clarify, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Superintendent.
I think the actual policy, if it was implemented as written, would be the change. So we are actually suggesting here that we not change current practice, that instead we align the policy with current practice. So Ms. Del Rossi, I think your words are quite wise, hence the reason that we're bringing this recommendation. And our recommendation is that we hold to the standard practice and that the committee, on your end, align the policy with current practice. And if there is a need to change, or if you actually wanted, as a committee, to go to a zero tolerance, that we allow that for next year so we can give that notice to schools and families. Because this would be, as we've had discussions internally, if we implemented this policy, which I understand it to be my job to make sure that the policies of this committee are implemented with fidelity, if I were to do that on your behalf, it would change the practices of this district significantly. And I just didn't understand that to be the intent of the committee, hence the reason I'm bringing it to you. So Ms. Del Rossi, the recommendation here is actually that we not change the practices of the district and that we align the policy to the practice, and then we go into that discussion going forward. No change would require us to implement a zero tolerance policy that has not been implemented, as I understand it from Mr. Skinner and others, ever in in their experience. And Mr. Skinner is the longest-standing principle that we currently have prior to moving into his current position.
Ms. Maun?
Thank you very much. Yeah, I I think that's the point we're at, and I think that's fine. I mean, I'm not looking to to change to some kind of draconian plan. But I do think that the change within this, in A, it's in scope, it's recognizing that because of COVID, you know, we wouldn't be talking about 3,400 students last year or the year before, or maybe the year before that, as I do the count. So there is a huge increase in the number of students who are impacted by this, the just the straight-up, you know, absenteeism. I I do have faith, and I have, I think the, I have great confidence in our school site professionals to be able to create these individual plans. And I also have great faith in their ability to know their students and know their families and be able to, I hope, have the space to come up with creative, innovative, and very personalized solutions for these students, because that's what these students deserve. They've been through a whole, you know, I mean, it's been a crazy two years. It is not surprising that they need additional help, and that's what we need to be building in for them. Very supportive of that. For me, what I, again, I come back to wanting to ensure that as we implement these individual plans, that there is a way that we can kind of codify and then ultimately be able to judge how effective they are. So I mean, that's my biggest thing. And again, as I've stated, I guess, the 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 policy conversation is large and and just, you know, incumbent upon this committee to take it on, but that's not the discussion for tonight, is my sense, so.
Ms. Dori?
Thank you. I just want to make a couple of points. I think that, again, they're intervention plans, they're not individual plans.
That's correct. I'm really glad you said that. They're not, they are not individual plans. Thank you.
And I I don't think that we have a zero tolerance policy. There might have been, I think when we went online, maybe they didn't take the most recent version that they gave to MASC. That would have been under Dr. Kufawi, that we put the policy online, because the written documents were more updated from 1975, obviously. But the policy, my understanding was 25 unexcused absences for the middle school. That's not a zero tolerance policy. That's a lot of absences.
If I may, Ms. Dori, it's, it it doesn't seem like a zero tolerance policy. It allows a lot of absences before we implement that policy, but a zero tolerance nonetheless is if we, we, every year in schools, given our population, we have students with trauma. We have students who go abroad to visit. I had a student who went abroad to Cambodia for more than a month to visit a grandparent who was dying. The student is an A student. When that kid comes back, if they've missed more than 25 days of school, they're all unexcused absences. That policy is zero tolerance in a sense, it doesn't give me the discretion as a principal to make a judgment that that child should be allowed to be passed on to the next grade level. It's zero tolerance in a sense, it doesn't allow you to make the judgment if a child had a death in the family, if the child had, you know, some other reason. Sure, if the child is hospitalized for half the school year, you can count them as excused absences, right? But otherwise, there's not really any discretion in there, and that's why it makes it zero tolerance.
If I could just continue because maybe I'm misunderstanding it. I always thought that if you hit that threshold, you could be retained if you didn't do these other things, like summer school, right? There were options to still be promoted in in circumstances. So that, again, to me, doesn't feel like zero tolerance. And I'm not advocating that we keep the same policy or we don't make changes to it. I just don't think it was that extreme, like throw the baby out with the bathwater. And I'm especially concerned about what happened last year.
Right.
I mean, how many, how many students didn't show up but still got promoted?
Okay, so I can answer both, they're two different questions. But I think, if I may, on your first question, Dori, I think it's really important to recognize that what you're asking for is exactly what Dr. Boyd is recommending, okay? That that, and what you're saying is that your understanding of the policy is such-and-so, and you are correct about the policy that's in practice, but the policy that's written is not that policy. And Dr. Boyd is saying the same as you. Let's be consistent, and let's have the policy reflect what is the current practice, if that's what we agreed to do.
But I'm concerned that we would, if what we're doing now, how is that fair to the kids who went through the pandemic last year?
Understood. So there's two parts to that, in my view. And the first is that last year involved a great deal of remote learning, some in school, some remote learning. In remote learning, as you've already, I think, identified and maybe identified previously, attendance in schools typically is taken in homeroom. And if a child's not in homeroom, but they show up halfway through first period, you adjust the attendance roster to the kid is in school now. That didn't work very well for remote learning, because what if the child didn't tune in the third period or fourth period? We know that was a problem, right? And we didn't have systems for all of the things that were unprecedented for schools. So we took attendance, and the attendance looked pretty good. We didn't have a system that said, even for the Department of Education, DESI, we couldn't say, well, the child was in school for half the, half the classes today, right? So the child's either in school or they were not, right? And so that's the way attendance worked last year. And about 94% of students, that was our day, average daily attendance last year, somewhere in the region of 94, 95%, we were very impressed. But it was partly because of that system. So so part of the answer, Ms. Dori, to the question about students from last year, the problem we have now didn't exist last year. And then the second part of it is that if there was something that we didn't do last year, I don't think it should prevent us from doing right by students now. And I think we need to deal with what we're dealing with now, which is unprecedented. And we have an opportunity, I think, to align the policy with the practices that I think will be fair to students.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, because I know there's another meeting coming in, I just want to make sure I'm clear because of the questions that are coming in. We are actually recommending no change to practice. We are recommending to the committee that the policy of the committee align to the historic practice of the district so that we can carry forward this year, both in alignment with the policy and in alignment with the historic practice of the district. In order to do that, it requires a temporary adjustment to your policy because the policy never was adjusted, despite what we all understood, hearing from our many constituents, the intent of the committee historically. And what I think, as I talk to you individually, is the intent of the individuals on this committee. However, I have not had the opportunity to get that guidance, nor has the policy ever been codified. Given the fact that you don't have the the privilege of a lot of time in front of you for discussion and research, we're recommending it solely as a temporary adjustment because there may, given this discussion, be a need for a longer-term adjustment to the policy. I just don't know that that's prudent right now. Instead, recommendation, align it with the current practice so that we can continue to provide guidance to our schools and that we have clear guidance from you that this is, in fact, your intent in terms of implementation. So a yes vote is a yes to maintain the current practice, at the same time, align the policy with that, with that historic practice. Mr. Mayor, with that, that would be our recommendation. The recommendation would be approval as written, knowing that part of that recommendation includes a deeper dive committee. I'm only saying that because I'm looking at the clock of 7:30, and I know there was a Conservation Commission meeting that was supposed to follow us here tonight, that I was notified of when I walked in the room.
Can I just clarify one thing? Sorry.
Okay, Mr. Rossi.
One quick question. So you want to put the policy we previously had in place to align with the current practices, but also add at the principal's discretion so that that is clarified also? Is that correct?
Thank you, Ms. Del Rossi. So, thank you, Ms. Del Rossi. So our understanding is that our principals were operating with the knowledge that they had discretion, a belief they had discretion. The policy did not reflect that after a certain point. The policy as written requires them, as written, quite literally, to retain a student after a certain point of attendance, meaning they, their discretion is taken from the schools, discretion is taken from the principals, and the committee is imposing by policy a requirement of retention. That's not how the the schools had been operating. So we're recommending here that the committee allows that discretion by virtue of policy in the policy for this year. So you would be allowing the discretion, whereas the current policy does not, even though schools have been implementing a level of discretion historically. Did I answer it, Ms. Del Rossi? Because it is a little bit tricky, because we're suggesting on, maintain the current practice and acknowledging that your current policy was never adjusted for that. So we need to adjust the policy in order to maintain the practice. So a yes maintains current practice and adjusts the policy for this current year.
With the principal understanding of the various situations of what's going on. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're empowering principals, empowering teachers, and valuing their knowledge of families. Yes.
We're reaching towards the end of the meeting anyway, but I was just informed that the Conservation Committee has moved to a meeting in the mayor's reception room. So we do have a few minutes to take more comments or questions. We'll go with Mr. Lay and then Ms. Dori after. Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Common sense is that, do we all feel bad for the students to have gone through COVID in the past two years? So what we're trying to change today is not a social promotion. I I feel that if we don't change, if we don't agree with the policy change, are we willing to penalize 3,400 students, make them come back for another, repeat another year? If if they do everything right, I mean, we have to understand that we are living in a COVID environment. And I feel that if we feel bad for the students and if we want to help the students, we should be a little bit more flexible, take the recommendation by the, Mr. Skinner, who has been a principal, a very good principal for a long time. And I I would recommend that we should support the policy. We should not penalize the students any further. We we should just help them get through the the year. Thank you.
Ms. Dori?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm just noting that the places in red where you say, and with permission of the principal, is where we're clearly stating in our policy that there is some discretion to principals. That's, that's where you, you've got it in here.
Yes.
And that would include students who don't show up for months and months of school. It's going to be at the discretion of the principal.
That's right.
Because we went from this number to no number of unexcused absences. And it's only temporary, I understand that. And I guess, I understand the concern that we've all been through a lot. 3,400 students are at risk of being retained or dropping out if we don't make this adjustment. But I I want to remind you all, we are here to teach our students. We're not helping them to just pass them through without the learning. So as both colleagues, Ms. Martin and Mr. Dakota, have mentioned, I would like to emphasize, we need to see some plans for recovering that lost learning. That's how we're going to serve our students. Not by graduate, I mean, a Lowell High graduation, a diploma from Lowell High School means something, and it should mean something. And we need to keep focused on that. But I'm, I'm fine with making these changes. I think that it's really the only thing we can do at this point.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the proposal as given to us here by Mr. Skinner.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Dakota, second by Mr. Lay. Would you, to approve the, the temporary adjustment for the school year 2021, 2022? Any, no other comments? Roll call, please. Second by Mr. Lay. Yep. Motion by Mr. Dakota.
Okay, yep.
And second by Mr. Lay.
Mr. Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Dori?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson? Six sheaths, one absent, approved.
No other comments. Need a motion to adjourn by Ms. Maun, second by Mr. Dakota. On the favor, say aye. Motion approved.
So that's where I'm going to put it. Temporary said changes for 21, 22 school year.
Yeah.
Conick, did those?